Good day, how are you doing?
Oh.
Hey Mike.
Don't you look a little different today?
Hey, you know. Big summer season, you gotta change things up.
That's her. Their choice. I believe Mike will be here. He's usually a little late, but.
Geez, dog here. It's everywhere.
Delay. With that, I would like to request everybody please put your handheld devices on silence so that we will not be disturbed with any of those new notices of acknowledgement. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and open the July already, a half a year. Wow. Open up the July meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustment and welcome everybody here tonight. And with that, can we call the roll?
Mike Delavecchia.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Ori Gibbs.
Here.
Mike Foot.
Here.
Steve Bogart.
Here.
We have the planning director Dean Trefethan and I, Robert Moore, will be doing the minutes.
Okay, just for quick housekeeping, Mike, you'll be, Michael, you'll be voting tonight. Sure. This Pearlie will not be with us tonight, so you'll be voting on all issues before the board tonight.
Very good.
Okay. With that, we'll go over the minutes.
I move you accept the minutes as written?
A second.
Discussion of the motion or minutes or anything? Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Minutes pass as is. Okay, extensions. We have three extensions before us tonight. And I understand there's no representation for the three applicants, therefore we cannot open them. And we cannot hear them unless they have a, the applicant being here physically. So, we will therefore move them to the next meeting. And we'll request a legal opinion upon the status of the extension date.
Okay.
And how they will affect anything whatsoever. So that we'll have that opinion at the next meeting when we hear these. Okay? That would be my motion. Do we have any discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion of what was said. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That will go for application two zero zero nine dash zero zero two seven. Two nine. And two twelve. No, two thirty. Is that right?
If you go through the weeds and go down.
Twenty seven, twenty nine, and thirty.
And there's one this here.
Beautiful building.
This reads a two thousand twelve dash zero zero one zero.
Yep.
Yep.
Different than the oh nine.
Okay. All right, we're gonna continue to the public hearing now, and we have one application before us tonight. And that application is two zero one eight dash zero zero one one, sixty eight Opechey Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article eight, Section two thirty five dash thirty nine D to allow for the construction of six foot fence where only four foot would be allowed. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you?
Hi, good evening. My name is Lindsay Allen, and I own the property at the corner of.
Bring the mic a little closer.
Oh. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Lindsay Allen. I own the property at the corner of McGrath Street and Opechey Street. And I'm requesting a variance of the four foot fencing to have a six foot fence for privacy and safety of myself, my children, and my dogs and others walking past.
Does this fence go all the way around your property or just on the front side on Opechey and McGrath?
It would be McGrath Street and main, I would maintain the corner the way that it is according to zoning guidelines. And then have it on Opechey Street as well.
The chain link fence in the back would stay?
Yes, it would.
And that's, who maintains the fence between you and one ten Bell Knapp Street? Is that something that you had installed or your neighbors had installed?
That's my fence. When I had somebody drive through it two years ago, I was the one that repaired it and fixed it.
So one of the things here. I'm curious about, this, this property is unique in that it is this corner piece. But there is plenty, and it's already fenced. You have room in the backyard actually here. Is that fully enclosed fencing for the children and dogs?
Is that where the chain link fences, the corner?
Sure, beyond the south side of the property over to the east running generally north, northwest.
Yes.
Opechey Street.
Yes.
So that's mostly enclosed?
If you're looking at my driveway on the left side, it is all enclosed. I have, I installed a gate there with the chain link fence.
Right, so that's an enclosed area?
Yes, it is.
And that is in the backyard?
That is on, on the property right in the front at the driveway.
The entire property is enclosed by fence now, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Now, you've lived there for how long?
Twelve years.
Twelve years. And what's the change that makes you want to make it that way?
Well, within the last few years, I adopted two dogs. They have been up and down the fence, barking at other dogs, causing anxiety for myself and for people walking by. The children will be out in the yard and, and dogs will be barking back and forth. I also did have somebody drive through the four foot paneling and drive through the backyard into the chain link fence on the other side. There is a police report for that.
Wow.
And I would just like to have a little bit more safety for myself and the kids and and I'd like to try to make the, the neighborhood happier, the people who have dogs.
Is part of the problem the fact that your dogs can jump over a four foot fence?
They cannot jump over, they have not.
They can't jump over the four foot fence?
No, they can't. They can see through it. And they can see, they can see over it when people are walking by too. Even today, I had somebody that was walking down the other side of the street and they still saw the person. And I would like a little bit more privacy in my yard.
So we've had this come up before with fences at four and six feet. And one of the problems where two roads converge, a six foot fence causes a sight problem in both, both ways. Makes it difficult for people who are driving out that way.
Yeah, my fence is at the corner to the zoning guidelines. It's setback. My property goes out further than the fence I have now at the corner. And I mow it and maintain it and my property actually goes into part of the sidewalk.
But that does, that doesn't address the issue that Mr. Mayhew just brought up, is that if you put a solid fence.
Well, that's an assumption. I would have to ask.
That's all right, because that was one of my next questions, is what kind of fence do you plan, are you asking to put up?
There wouldn't be any gaps in the fence, so not like the one that I have now.
Well, this picture of the, of the fence in this brochure that we were given today, is that the kind of fence that's going to be going up?
I don't know where that fence came from. It does not look to scale to me, and that's nothing that I envisioned that fence to look like. And I just was given that today also.
What your fence could look like?
Yeah, what will it look like?
I'd like to have it a dark cedar. I was thinking about putting lattice on. The person that's building the fence is not here today. I do plan to make it look nice. I want it to last long. I don't want it to be like a fence that I have now that I have to replace in five years.
I still don't understand what you're gonna have for fence.
So I'd like to have cedar fencing sloping down with, with the slope of McGrath Street.
Like a split rail fence?
No.
Like this, but cedar.
Huh?
Similar to the picture, but cedar.
Similar to this picture of the yellow fence?
Of the, yeah, whatever color fence that is and, and that, I have. I don't know where the scaling on that fence is. It doesn't look accurate. It, it doesn't look anything what I pictured that fence to be.
Do you have some pictures of your fence which you wanna?
No, I don't.
I have a hard time visualizing what you're, what you're building.
Yeah, I didn't realize I had to have fence plans tonight, otherwise I would have.
How old is the fence that's there now?
The side on McGrath Street was redone probably six years ago, six or seven years ago. It doesn't, those picket fence panels, they don't last long. I do have kids that kick it in. The sidewalk plow because of the gaps in between that breaks it. It takes, it takes a lot of, a lot of damage every year.
One of the problems with the wooden fence is it, I don't, it doesn't look like it's been painted. Painting a fence would have made it last a little longer probably.
It may have. When my, when we put it up, we did not do that. We just replaced what we could.
Have you considered a four foot fence solid?
I have considered it. I did speak with some of the abutters, but apparently they are one of them. And they had mentioned that, but I do want a little bit of privacy, and a four foot fence does not give me any privacy in my yard at all. And it still allows the dogs to see people walking by, and it's still gonna cause problems.
Are the dogs vicious?
No, but they protect their yard, they're cattle dogs, and they feel, I've talked to vets about them. That is their job. They chose that as a job. They need a purpose in life and a job in life, and theirs is to protect the, the fence line. They're the nicest dogs. Once dogs come into the fence, they're, they play together. They go to daycare on Fridays at four paws. They play with other dogs, but they're very protective of their fence line. I adopted the dogs from the Humane Society, and they are a part of my family, so I don't plan to have them go anywhere.
What breed are they?
Cattle dogs, mixes.
Cattle dogs, like Australian shepherds or something?
It's a, it's an Australian cattle dog mix, both of them, same litter.
Has DPW looked at this? With a six foot privacy fence being in place?
Not that I'm aware of.
Cause basically what you want is a privacy fence six foot tall, which means there's no visual through it, around it.
But I'd like to maintain the corner to zoning standards.
But that's the.
How would you do that if you, if it's a six foot fence?
It, it would not be a six foot fence at the corner. It would stay the same height.
So at what point are you gonna drop it to four feet? Just at the corner?
Going down McGrath Street as soon as the fence starts making the turn, that's where I would have it.
What, what, my concern when I drove past it was just the line of sight. Even if you drop it right at the corner, you still need some line of sight before you start rounding the corner. And I'm just concerned about cutting that off. And if we had some, we had an idea of what the fence was going to look like.
Right. I could point out here that we are in fact talking about over three hundred feet of fence line that is going to be six feet tall in the middle of what has traditionally been an open view area. So just as we're considering that.
And there are no other fences of that nature in the neighborhood?
But we should allow it to go.
Is that whole backside fenced?
Are you gonna have gates at the at the garage area so that they can, you have to get out of your car and open the gates, get in the car, drive it in, and close the gates?
No, it's just where the existing fence is right now. I, I'm not, I don't plan to block in my driveway or anything like that, or bring the fence out to the corner like the pictures that was presented.
What's to keep the dogs from going out?
It's all, it's all fenced in.
It's what?
It's all fenced in. There's a, I installed a chain link fence at the garage. So from the garage to my neighbors.
You're gonna keep the chain link fence in the back?
Yes, yep, I have no, no issues. There's no people that walk by. Fifty people a day, sixty people a day. It just doesn't happen on those sides, and I don't have any problems with those two sides of the yard.
I got a question for. How far? Because if, I'm just looking at a picture here, and it appears that part of the backyard also has the short fence. So how far up is the requirement for the four foot fence versus? Cause I can't imagine that whole length is required to be four feet.
Are you talking on the McGrath Street side?
Uh, yes.
If, if if you're within the front setback, which this lot has, the, the front setback applies to.
The rear of the house also?
No, it applies to the, to along both streets. If you're within the front setback, which is fifteen feet, then you, then the fence can be four feet high. If you go at least fifteen feet away from the property line, then you could be six foot. You would lose, you know, a substantial portion of, of both front yard and backyard. But if you were fifteen feet off the property, not off the road, because as we know, there's usually X number of feet from the edge of pavement to property line, but wherever the property line actually is, if you were fifteen feet back, you could be six feet high.
I thought you would build right up to the property line?
You, you can, except for the zoning states that on, on frontage, on the front property line, while you're within the setback, it has to be four feet, maximum four feet. That, that's effect, in effect, what the variance request is, so that if, if she were to move the fence back to the fifteen foot line, all the way around, and, and maybe a little bit more than that right at the corner, then it could be six foot and she would not need to be here. But she would lose a substantial portion of the yard in doing that. But I think your question, Steve, was would it go all the way down, and I, I I think the proposal is for the, is, is for the fence to be along the entire length of, of the frontage on McGrath. And.
I was just curious, the reason why I was asking, I was curious like to where that telephone pole is. The last telephone pole on her property. That almost looks like it's representative of the backyard, and that's why I was trying to see.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see what you're looking at. Like right in here, cause there's, of course they take a fence running here.
And that's that last?
Yeah, it would be that last.
Right. That's the part, that's the twenty feet.
And if there was a way to.
Which is that section right there.
Right.
Where the, she has to buy the zoning ordinance to allow to be.
But based on what you're telling me is, it's a frontage all the way down, so.
Correct. Yeah, it would, it, it, under our zoning ordinance, she has two frontages, and so the front setback applies to everything along Opechey and everything along McGrath. Once she reaches either of the neighbor property lines on McGrath or, or on the side of Opechey, then those are, those would be considered sides. She, she in effect doesn't have a rear property line. She has two sides.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at the moment?
There being none, I'd like to go ahead and open it up to the public.
Thank you.
And ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, my name is Terry Robertson, um, I'm one of the owners at seventy-three Opechey Street. And also in the audience are two other of the abutters. The only abutter that's missing that had signed the letter was, um, Carlos Guzman, who was unable to be here. Um, I think the letter and attachments speak for themselves pretty much, with the most important point being the major safety concerns. As abutters along that strip where the proposed fence would go and backing out of or even pulling into the street, all of our driveways are essentially one car width, we back out of them, whether we have two or one cars parked. And I know personally for me and my husband, um, the first thing I do, the last thing I do as I'm pulling out is to look right up, I guess what would be considered part of McGrath, to see if any cars are coming around the corner as we back out, whether we're backing out to go up McGrath ultimately or to go up Opechey. I know there was a question raised by Ms. Allen concerning the scale of the fence that we attempted to Photoshop, um, as abutters to get for our own sake, um, in addition to possibly submitting here what the fence would look like. It was my understanding, it was a privacy fence, whether it was a different color than what was shown on the attachments, um, obviously we didn't know what was proposed. But, um, Rick Page, who's here tonight, actually had somebody in his office put it together and received the assurance that that photoshopped version of the pictures is actually to scale. I was confused and I guess still remain a little bit confused as to exactly where the four-foot would begin and where the six-foot would begin in a proposal. I did speak with Ms. Allen, had a pleasant conversation with her and actually walked the property because I was concerned and it was my style to wanna learn more about what the proposal was other than just what was on file. We spent quite a bit of time walking around the, uh, the perimeter of her current four-foot fence and even, I guess you could say speculated as to where possibly, if you maintained a four-foot fence on a portion of the, um, the corner, where a six-foot fence could logically start. And I think it might be a problem with what was described as far as the ultimate setback requirement all the way up McGrath, but we looked at where there's a crosswalk coming, um, from the middle school over to the sidewalk on McGrath and, um, you know, nothing, I wasn't sure from the plans that had been submitted where exactly the four-foot versus six-foot was proposed. It's a busy area, not just when school's in session, lots of functions going on, events, um, at the middle school, at Opechey Park, you've got the two public beaches, constantly people walking by, families with strollers, kids on bikes, it's a very well-traveled area. And, uh, most recently even with Fourth of July fireworks, it does concern me to imagine people crossing from the sidewalk coming off McGrath to then go on the sidewalk on Opechey, not being visible to cars coming down McGrath. Aesthetically, it really does change the environment, the characteristics of the neighborhood. If you ride down those streets, you're really not gonna see anything else that resembles such a closed-in fortress-type feel. I'm a pet lover, have dogs, have cats, and I sympathize with the issues that Ms. Allen has described, but there has to be a better alternative for her pets. My pets are also part of my family, so I understand that sentiment completely, but it's to the sacrifice of the neighborhood if there's to be a six-foot fence there. And I do believe, along with my fellow abutters, that it will depreciate the property. All of those houses along the lakeside of Opechey, um, can see part of what's to the left of the middle school, can see some green areas, can take advantage of, of view on that side of their house in addition to the safety issues that are raised and I can answer any questions that you may have about any of the points that we're attempting to make.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name's Rick Page, I'm a neighbor right across the street at sixty-nine Opechey Street. I just wanted to add that, uh, currently the fence is about forty to forty-one inches and, and so, but the, the seventy-two inch, so the six-foot is exactly to scale, just, just so you know, so you have a reference visually what it would look like, okay?
Does anybody else wish to speak for or against this application? Let the record indicate, no one else from the public wished to speak for or against this application, I bring it back to the board for, for the questions.
You know.
Question?
Questions, no questions.
Question.
Question.
When I, when I look at this sketch-
The applicant, please.
When I do look at this sketch, I, I, I'm confused as well.
Can I, what sketch are you looking at? Okay.
I see, cause I see max four foot, are you talking about the max four foot that's in the zoning ordinance?
I did a Google Earth of the corner and you can see the fence, the four-foot fence where the corner is now, if you wanted to see that.
That's not, well, and I've done that.
Oh, okay.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I see max four and I don't know what that means, is that just quoting what's there now?
Yes.
Not, okay.
Yes.
Is it actually four feet or is it something under four feet?
It's a, I believe it's three and a half feet, picket fence bought from Lowe's.
I, I think the drawing i- is supposed to represent that between, between the front, the two front property lines-
Yep.
And the lines that are drawn on the plot, that within that area, the maximum is four feet high.
And that, that's-
Once you get to that fifteen foot or further into the property, you could be six foot.
That I understand, but I, I, I just was-
I think that's what that's supposed to represent.
It, it, it almost gives the impression that at the corner, you're only gonna be four feet and then you're gonna be six feet back and-
I actually did the, the drawing for this when Ms. Allen, uh, came in to ask what her options were. On the drawing, um, that's depicted in her application, the first twenty feet of the corner of her property line has a maximum of two and a half feet for the zoning ordinance because it's at a corner of an intersection.
Okay.
And then, um, the fifteen feet back from the, from the property lines is where the six-foot fence is allowed.
Okay.
And then with, from that property line to the fifteen feet back is where there's a maximum of the four-foot height.
Yeah, makes sense to me now. And the two and a half feet at the corner, I mean, it's the, it's the line of sight really at the corner that I'm, I, I was questioning and, and a solid fence right there.
I don't plan to touch that corner at all.
Kind of bushes that out front?
Uh, there's a lilac tree that's right at the corner.
How tall is that?
It's, it's pretty tall. It sits behind the fence at the corner.
We had a similar problem down on Charles Street, we had to, and they had to reduce the size of their fence out by the road, remember that?
Out by the road, or yet, that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
Any other questions?
Is, is there an option to go south of your house? It looks like you have a lot of space there.
South on, on McGrath's, I don't, I don't know what you're-
It's already, it's already fenced all the way in.
Yeah.
The chain link fence in the back. Had you thought about a six-foot chain link fence?
Then I would need to pri- I would need to put privacy between the dogs. And I would like, and that wouldn't give me much privacy.
Building up a fence like that really changes the tenor of the neighborhood because everything else is open down there and this would be the only spot that's really segregated from the rest of the streets.
My original intention on the fence, I don't have a, a diagram to give you, which I, I didn't really know that I needed to bring, but I originally wanted to do four-foot cedar with two feet of lattice on the top, so it did look a little open, but still give me some privacy.
My, my question is, instead of going to the corner with the fence, can't you come to, on the other side of your house and put fence on that side?
On the right side?
To make a kennel for the dogs.
In the back of the house.
On, on, on your garage side of the house.
I could make a kennel, I do have a very large, nice yard and I really would like to use it more and, and when I'm outside on that big part of my land, I feel like everybody is watching me, everybody's driving by, everyone's walking by, and I really would like to use it for myself too. I don't feel like there's any, any type of, of privacy at all and I'm just looking for a little bit of it.
The other, the other question that I have is having had dogs most of my life and working with dogs, your dogs are still gonna protect the fence, whether it's closed, closed in and they can see something on the other side or not, if they know something is there, they're going to bark. So simply, I, I think if that's what you're trying to achieve is that keeping the line of sight from the dogs from seeing anything, keeping them from barking, that's not gonna work. They're, they're still gonna bark because they're gonna hear something on the other side, or they're gonna smell the other dogs on the other side or they'll smell the people. So I don't think that's going to sat- satisfy, that's not gonna shut your dogs out.
No, and I, and-
I, I've got a, I've got a dog that does, is also very protective of this house, so I understand him, huge, huge dog lover, don't wanna, don't wanna deprive the dogs of the free run of the yard, I just, I just think if that's one of your reasons, I don't think that's gonna work, but I do understand your pri- your need for privacy.
Thank you, and I know that it's not going to completely stop my dogs from barking, I wouldn't expect them to stop, it's not, that's not what a dog does, so, but I think it would prevent the line of sight for them and maybe make things a little, a little less for them to see. A lot of it is they see people coming and when they see, they go, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I?
Closing comments?
I just wanted to say one thing, the picture of that fence is absolutely nothing that I want or envisioned the property to be, I think I said that already. I've looked at the, the height of that fence, I've looked at that compared to my house, even on one of the pictures, um, it shows it going halfway up the back deck onto the lattice and I can't even reach the top from the, from the ground, I tried to today and there's just, I really do not believe that that is to scale and I think it's making it look terrible.
But if you're looking for privacy, what other kind of fence can you put up?
Well, I-
Her suggestion with, with the four-foot solid and the two-foot lattice, I'd actually like to see what that would look like.
Okay.
If the, if the contractor that you've got building it-
Lattice?
Could do that, well, I, I, I think I have an idea of what she's, what she's talking about, a solid on the bottom and then two feet of lattice on top, so she's got, so she's got some protection, so, some complete privacy on the bottom, it would be a little bit more like, in, like screening rather than solid fence.
Yes.
And it would be extremely helpful if we could see it, or if, if I could anyway.
Okay.
See it, an actual idea of what the fence is gonna look like in relation to the house, actually on the road. It would be very helpful to me and I think I'd have a much easier, I'd have an easier id- uh, idea, of easier time visualizing it and making a decision on it. And actually knowing that, that you didn't, that you weren't thinking of a solid six-foot all the way up makes a difference to me as well.
No, when I saw that picture, I, I-
I'd really like to see what the fence is gonna look like.
Yeah, I did even mention, uh, you know, I tried to reach out and mention that, but, um, that, that was not, that was not my intention, that picture.
The problem we have is we, we have only your say-so, if we allow you to build a six-foot fence and it comes out that it's like the fence in these pictures, then we've given you a fence that, uh, some of us feel that we don't wanna give.
Which is why I'd like, I'd really like to see something from the contractor, if you could do that.
So if I could do that and it was acceptable?
It, it, it would help me to be able to make a better decision. I mean, if I had to vote right now, without, without an idea of what the fence is going to look like and what the impact would be on line of sight on that corner, it would be difficult to do.
The-
I agree.
As a person who sells fencing-
Yeah.
The fencing question is with the lattice on top and stuff, would not, all it does is gives you a visual effect of a little bit of openness. The little lattice work in there leaves little two-inch diamonds. So the actual visual, looking through line of sight would still be the same as-
Still be, still be the same.
Would still be the same for people on the other side as they traveled and whatnot, would still have that visual impairment.
Okay. I was thinking also in terms of what we're discussing now instead of questioning, so this should probably wait till we-
So any other questions? Any closing comments?
Uh, the only thing that I have to say is if, if the board would consider anything to give me any type of privacy, um, at all, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Back to the fence with the lattice on top, I was just thinking that in terms of appearance as well, rather than it's the, a solid six-foot stockade fence, the appearance might be a little less severe.
The appearance of it would probably be, it, not probably, i- it's more alluring, more-
Appealing?
Appealing.
Appealing, visually appealing?
Okay, visually appealing, but the question to be would be-
The line of sight is still gonna be-
Is the safety-
Yeah, okay.
Of where this is located across from a middle school where you have high influx of kids, two times a day traversing, plus in the evening time where it's dark, you have, uh, kids from sports, basketball, uh, all of those sports moving in and out. Okay, so that's the safety portion one would have to, to, to me, think about.
And one would have to think about how you liked art on your fence as the kids walked by continually.
So, you know, as I'm looking through these, uh, you know, these are questions I'm gonna ask individually so that we can have that discussion. Now, what was brought before the board- Now, what was brought before the board was, do y'all want to allow the applicant to bring in pictures and stuff or renderings or anything else that might?
If you're going to show me a picture of a six foot fence, I already know what it looks like. I've driven down there and I've done, seen the sightline, so it's.
I think six feet is too high.
So I, I don't think any.
If, if with your knowledge of, of fencing and you think just the lattice on top, while it's more visually appealing, is not going to make any difference in terms of impairing line of sight at that corner?
If I had to look at it, i- if I looked at number three and, uh, the variance is not contrary to public interest and if I had to say to me personally, it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, I have to fall into question, would that? This is something each and.
Not alter the character of the neighborhood?
Yes, if, if it was.
The criteria.
The criteria is that it wouldn't alter the.
No, but I think it would alter, yeah.
What I'm saying is that's each individual's decision here is, A, do you feel that it would change the character of the neighborhood? Okay. Now, the next part, as we continue this is, does it have, uh, threaten the public health, safety or welfare or otherwise injure the public's rights? Now, this is not your standard, the joining roads because of the exact location is next to a middle school where you have high number of buses, cars, uh, kids moving back and forth. And we've already unfortunately had a situation where it was in a plain view area where not so good things happened. Okay, so, and that was in a clue, a clear area. So if, if, if we're going to now put a six foot hindrance, you know, cause you have to look at the intent of the code. The intent of the code is to provide, A, the visual portion, so you have camaraderie upon the neighborhood. But also it does provide a, uh, in certain situations as this, uh, safety. We do get dark at four thirty in the afternoon. Okay, and you got crosswalks and stuff like that and I don't know. This is individual, these are things that we have to think of. Each individual has to think of on their own, okay? But to answer that question themselves.
And while four feet may not seem sufficient, it's better, it would be better than nothing and she could put four feet up without the variance.
Correct.
Except for how much of the front corner?
Uh.
That.
It has to be twenty, twenty feet back.
From that.
From the, from the, from the corner.
And that front corner is two and a half feet?
Right, within the twenty foot mark, but if you're more than twenty feet back, you could be the four feet.
Alright.
The, the s- the, the standard that New Hampshire DOT and our local DPW uses for a vision is the thirty inches, which is where the thirty inches at the intersection comes from. So.
So twenty feet back it would have to.
Yeah, so within that twenty feet would have to be thirty feet, uh, thirty inches, sorry, thirty inches or less. Once you're back beyond the twenty feet, it could go to the four feet. And the s- the, the thirty inches comes from, um, and it's probably a little outdated now because there's so many SUVs on the road, but originally it came from a standard sedan and, and your seating position in a standard sedan, as you look out the window, your, your vision is basically thirty inches or above. In this day and age with so many SUVs, it's probably higher than that, but there's still a significant number of, of, of sedans on the road. But that's where the thirty inches comes from.
So my wife and her Civic would still have a problem.
Still see a thirty inches, yeah. But I'm not, I'm not sure that, you know, if you, if, if, i- in, in this case, the contention, the houses across the street on, on Opechey, if they are now looking through the, through the fence and down McGrath for their visual aid at a solid four feet, I'm not sure that that's still possible. And it's probably no different than a six foot. It may be different, but it may not be.
Yeah.
My main concern is not so much is, and I do appreciate the fact they live there, but you have more people driving.
Yep.
And the, the positive and negative viewpoints of the drivers coming around the two corners. Okay, because it is such a sharp turn. They need to be able to see. Okay, especially when you've got a bus trying to traverse and.
Understood.
Kids on the sidewalks. To me, that, it's not the person pulling out the driveway and yes, their safety is indeed important, but I've got.
Being able to see what's on the other side.
Being able, the people driving have to be able to see.
And the kids on the bicycles and the kids walking and the fifteen school buses.
So, the fifth one would be the substantial justice is done. By approving it, would justice be done to the public?
Well, that's it, it's, it's the.
Does the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one? Or does the needs of the one outweigh the needs of the many? You know? To me, it's the safety of the many versus the, the, the privacy of the one. The value of the surrounding properties are not diminished. I haven't given any documentation. I, I.
But you would recognize, and this maybe would have changed the neighborhood, as you drive in and we talk a lot about a more walkable, a more visual type of community. As you come down Main Street and look across Opechey, there are fences everywhere. This is, there are fences throughout the neighborhoods. Most of them, you know, are separation of sports or this or that. I'm saying as you look all the way across. And you can see into Opechey Point. You come into the neighborhood off Oak Street and down onto Belknap. The fences in there are mostly on the back walls. They separate back lines and neighborhoods and give them the privacy. As you come around that corner and you're looking at the school, once again, I was y- you sitting in my Subaru. I could see generally across what is open areas when I was a kid and I did go to this middle school. It was not a fence and it led to difficulties with the guy who owned it back in the day. And as kids, we knew we couldn't cross there. But what finally solved it was putting the fence up. But still, y- you, in a neighborhood like that and you recognize that this, uh, this having two frontages, this is as you look around for your safety. You're looking across areas, whether the kids are riding bikes, whether they're walking, skateboarding. There's a lot of activity there and I think putting up a great big six foot fence would definitely change the neighborhood and impact the visuals and I could definitely see it not working out as well as one would imagine. The fence is in poor condition and is probably ready to be replaced in some way anyways. But I can't feel that a six foot fence that separates the neighborhood like that is going to lead to a better functioning society.
Okay. Any other discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
Like to entertain a motion to deny application two zero two oh one eight dash zero zero one one sixty-eight Opechey Street. Looking for, uh, variance of Article eight, section two thirty-five dash thirty-nine D. In this, this is a unique, uh, lot, but it's like buying a piece of property near an airport. As you purchase it, you recognize that you're buying in to a heavily used section of town. This is a lot of, uh, a lot of, um.
High intensity.
High intensity use just because of the school. That's the uniqueness of the area, the, which we want safety. Everything we do for the children is for the sake of the children. Why would we put up blocks where they could potentially get hurt, darted out from behind? So, I want my, um, I think the variance would be contrary to the c- public interest because of, uh, decreased sightlines and safety. I don't think it, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it would create unnecessary safety issues. Uh, substantial justice is done. I would have to go with, um, the good of the society and the neighborhood over the desires of one. Um, we couldn't tell that the properties would be diminished, but certainly if in a neighborhood that had traditionally had open sightlines and this goes to McGrath, it goes to Belma- Belknap, it goes to Opechey, all of this neighborhood, the fences are in the back and that's where I think, um, I can't see, uh, I can't see that little enforcement would result in unnecessary hardship. And I don't think that it's a reasonable use. Thusly therefore, and that being said.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion? There being none? All those in favor of the motion?
Right.
Okay. Sorry. So. Motion is denied. I lost my agenda too.
Do you need an agenda? Ron, give me your agenda.
I put it away. Okay. We move on. Uh, other business.
I, I just wanted to mention to the board that, um, on the three extensions, I, I guess I was, uh, not aware of the policy of the board and, and perhaps what the ramifications are. The, the applicant did have a, a scheduling conflict and I, I, I suppose it's possible that they could have arranged for someone to be here, but I told them that it should not be an issue, so that's my bad. Won't do that again. But I will ask for the, for the legal counsel opinion.
Okay. And everybody got the news of the court hearing, uh, the results for the island?
For the island, yes.
Okay.
What happened?
The.
They held, they held for us. They upheld our decision.
Yes, I saw that in the paper.
Yes, so.
Oh, I guess we saw it.
You should have got a.
Yeah, we did.
An email with the, uh, the thing in it, so. Um, anything else? Nope?
No, it did stand for my position last week in front of the city council. Being that time of year again.
Oh.
That's what I said, really?
Oh yeah, August.
I think I'm up next year?
Next year.
Yeah.
Would like to see that changed to?
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
It probably will. I'll probably be guilted into it again.
Oh, Jesus.
Well, yeah, cause I can walk out and leave the guy short.
No.
Especially after it's taken me all this time to. Get my feet on the ground.
Alright, so I guess that, is there anything else? Any other business for the board? If not, like to entertain a motion of.
Want you to adjourn?
That would be sweet. Got a motion?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
I.
Good night.
Wow.
Alright then. Sorry to say no to Erica.